Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, March 3rd, 2025, and it's time to call the Franklin City Council Meeting to Order. Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Austin?
Here.
Mr. Shuck?
Here.
Ms. McGinnis?
Ms. Nally?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Prime?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brian Reese, and again, thank you for coming and saying the prayer and the pledge. Appreciate it.
Sure thing. Invite you to join me if you will. Our Father, we come before you this evening, and we thank you for the privilege of being here in City Hall. I pray for all the items on the agenda tonight, old and new. I pray that you would just give wisdom and discernment to our council to make the best decisions for our city. And I pray that you would just be with each and every person here, and we thank you for their involvement and their interest in the matters of our city. Thank you for our first responders and those who served and protect us here in Franklin. And we thank you for the sunshine and the warmth. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Let's stand together, invite you to join me as we say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
All right, again, thank you all for being here tonight. Is there any announcements or public comment that does not pertain to the agenda? Okay, hearing done, we will go on to consent agenda.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from February 19th, City Council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There isn't any old business, we'll go right into new business.
Move to read new business by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to read by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, we'll go into item number one, introduction of ordinance 2025-02, and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 2013-04, sale and use of fireworks, City Attorney Lynn Gray and Senior Planner Joanna Tinnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn most of this over to Joanna, but you will recall, last year, I believe it was Councilwoman Nally, came to us about our existing fireworks ordinance and in preparation of the festivities in June and July of this year. She had had some concerns from her constituencies regarding the amount, time, and type of fireworks. I think that's an accurate portrayal. Yeah, correct. That were being utilized during the holiday season. As we indicated, the fireworks industry has gotten some lobbying strength in our legislature, so there are certain restrictions upon what a local entity can do. But after Councilwoman Nally's questions, Joanna and I met to go together to see what can we do to strengthen our ordinance with regard to the extent to which we can regulate and who would be enforcing the regulations. And as a result of that, in conjunction with what the law permits, Joanna took over and drafted the ordinance before you. It's for introduction tonight, and then it will be for public hearing at the next meeting. But take it away, Joanna.
So we did have a committee that we came together and met, Ms. Nally, well, Councilwoman Nally, the Fire Department, Police Department, actually, the Evans Technician, since he has experience with explosions. So what we have before you, instead of just making an amendment to our existing regulations, which I thought was going to be the easiest thing, with the Indiana Code, it appeared that there were some things that we could just kind of order a little bit clearer, and it was easier to just repeal and replace what we had, instead of trying to amend this, amend that. So that's why you do have a full repeal and replace. This is in line with what the Indiana Code allows us. We're adopting the definitions that they have in place. One of the items that we found through this process is there is a list, under number two, that has 10 items with some subsections that throughout the state code, they just refer to that complete list over and over and over. So to make it a little easier, we just decided to make that a definition within ours. That way, we could use two words instead of 25. So with the retail sale, that's still regulated by the state. All permitting goes through the state. With the use of fireworks, some of the things that were brought up was making sure, obviously, that they're 18 years of age or they're under 18 with supervision. We did go through and make sure that it listed that approval is only on private property of the person, on private property of another person who has given permission, or at a special discharge location. That's the one that the permit is required at the state level, and then it also comes to the local level. Since there were a number of instances where people were doing fireworks in the public right-of-way or on church property, city property, and also school property, there is a regulation in here stating that that is prohibited unless there is expressed written consent, giving the name of the person that was granted the permission, the address or detailed description of the location, and the dates in which the consent was given. So if there is someone setting off fireworks at one of our parks and a responding officer goes, they can request the written consent. If they do not have written consent from the Parks Department, then that would be a violation, and they would be cited. So that does allow, should the Board of Works, a church, the school, give permission, it still allows that, you know, to move forward. The permitted hours are exactly the same as the state allows. None of that has changed, so we are in compliance. Anytime a special discharge permit is issued, we do have required insurance that has to be provided to us, and all of that is approved by the Board of Works. And then the meat of the document that most people are interested in is the enforcement and violations. Since there is Indiana Code, in addition to municipal code, it is at the discretion of the officer who is responding on whether or not they issue a citation of an Indiana Code violation or a municipal code violation. There is a difference in the penalties, because within Indiana Code, everything cited in that can range from a Class C infraction to a Level 6 felony, which is a little more extreme than local. So for the local, we do have a progression of offense. First offense is $50, second offense is $100, and each offense after that is $500. Like I said, the chief, deputy chief of both police and fire have reviewed this, along with Attorney Lynn Gray and the rest of the members of our committee. If you have any questions?
Seeing no questions, thank you for the introduction.
Thank you.
That gets us to item number two, insurance presentation, Franklin Insurance and Gibson Insurance. And I just want to say that I wanted to bring this forward in light of the recurring discussion that we have every year during budget time regarding insurance cost. That's a discussion the council, I have every year. We consider the options of increasing the employee contributions, and however, we all recognize the value of our employees, and increasing their burden is always a last resort for us, although we know our employees has an excellent insurance policy. Over the years, I have met with numerous insurance brokers and agencies, and while they all offer excellent programs, none have been able to provide a significant savings. And I'd like to take a moment, thank Franklin Insurance, Gibson Insurance for being here today to present the offerings that you see that could help us with more cost-effective solutions. And I also want to add that this started for me on September the 10th. I got an email from Gibson that wanted to talk about insurance regarding our city policies, and that was the first time that I'd met the folks at Gibson or knew them, period. And then on, in that meeting, I told Gibson Insurance that they start, you know, just like all the other ones, tell us all the great programs that we have. And I said, "I wasn't interested in hearing anymore about the programs. I want to hear about a savings." So they understood what we're looking for, and then come a couple of weeks, I got another email, said they had some savings they wanted to share. And then at that point, I did not meet with them until November the 13th, which I, along with others, met with Gibson and Franklin Insurance in the same room to talk about the city's expectations and to make sure they have the same opportunity. We wanted the best quality and pricing for both medical and property and casualty. And then on September, and at that time, November the 13th, I'd asked, when Gibson was telling us they can show us a big savings, and at that point, I'd made a comment to Gibson and Franklin Insurance that if you want to have a presentation, meet with the council. We can set that up. So on February the 11th, Gibson presented their cost savings plan to all the city council people in three separate meetings, and there was an opportunity to ask questions. So here we are, March the 3rd. So this started September the 10th, 2024. Here we are, March the 3rd. So I think we've done our due diligence, and I feel pretty comfortable with where we're headed to have a presentations off two great providers. So at this time, I know it's hard to say who goes first, who goes second. Franklin Insurance is our current provider.
Mr. Mayor, might I suggest, just from a, oops, after I hit myself in the head with a pen, from a practical standpoint, this is not a public hearing, nor is it required, but it, as we discussed before, I believe this to be an executive decision, but you have indicated your strong desire to have a public meeting and to bring in the council as a result of this from a funding standpoint. So even though a public hearing isn't required, might I suggest that we follow the same provisions that we typically do with regard to time limitations? And so that's typically 20 minutes to each individual who wishes to make a presentation. Then allow the council members to ask questions and/or extend the time if they feel it's necessary. Like I indicated to you, a public hearing does not require this. It's a professional services agreement and is part of the executive branch. But Mayor, you made it clear to me you wanted to involve the council, because ultimately, each year, they appropriate money for that. So I might suggest we do a timed presentation. Nothing required anybody to take the full 20 minutes, but to limit it somewhat so that we have some degree of order. If that's acceptable to you, sir?
Absolutely. John, do you want to go first, sir?
Well, I've got a question.
Can you go over there so it gets on the?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Don't have my 20 minutes.
I won't, John.
Question would be, number one, scope. I have no idea what the scope, I was not participating in the February proposals. I have not seen what Gibson has proposed. I have no idea, I know that we're talking about employee benefits, and you've mentioned the health insurance and the cost of that. You had indicated we're also talking about property and casualty insurance. I don't believe anybody's made any presentation formally on any of that yet. Now, I haven't seen it, so you're asking me to respond to proposals that you guys got a month ago?
No, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is for Franklin Insurance to give us your best proposal.
You already have it.
Okay, we have it, we have it.
I gave you a proposal, no wait, I gave you a proposal for employee benefits that were effective. These policies are already in place. That was January 1. The property and casualty insurance was in December, on the 17th of December. So you have those policies, they're already in place. My thought would be, if you're asking for competitive bids, why are we doing it now when there isn't a competitive bids? You would do that at the renewal time, which would be January 1 on the employee benefit side, and December 17th next year. They're already in place.
Well, I think the reason we haven't done that, didn't we get notified like 24 hours before our time was up, that it was time to?
Not quite, but no, with the employee benefit stuff was done, you know, two months in advance. The marketplace in the P and C side is considerably more volatile, and we do end up taking a little bit more time. We had those in a week before. But yeah, it's going to be very, the property casualty business is considerably different than the employee benefit side. And it's a very, very limited marketplace with considerable constraints, and you're dealing with underwriters taking to the last minute to make underwriting decisions. And I think if you look at the proposals and the policies that you have, they're exceptional. And if you were to make comparisons with other municipalities throughout the state, I think you would find you're so far ahead and above the game of what other municipalities are going through. Again, my point is, is that let's compete on a level playing field. I think what you're asking me to do is to give all my work that we've done, property casualty side, the employee benefit side, to another agency and say, here's what they've done, see what you can do.
That is not the facts. They have, as far as I know, they've never got anything from me. And I told you in an email that I wouldn't do that.
I understand.
Yeah.
So what am I, you're asking me to present a program. You already have my program itself. I can go through and talk to you about the services that we give you. You've, I assume, in order to do an employee benefit quote that they're presenting, and a P and C quote that they're presenting tonight, that they've already been given all my work. They would have had to in order to provide those quotes to you.
Well, I don't know if they were given your work. I think they were given what's public records for.
All the policies and all the underwriting information?
I don't know what they got.
Okay.
I didn't give them a thing.
Well, that's, I guess that's why I'm saying.
And that's why I don't want to be accused of doing some backdoor deal and handing somebody.
No, I'm not accusing them.
That did not happen.
All I'm saying is, is that for us to respond, I don't know what you want. We've already presented the quotes.
Okay.
They're beyond quotes, those policies are in place, correct? So our policies are there. If we're quoting policies, I don't have much more to add except for that. If you want to talk about the services that we provide, I'm more than happy to spend lots of time on the services we've provided historically, annually, going forward, and what we do next year. But I don't know what they're, I don't know what the scope of what they're presenting is. I have no idea.
I think what they're presenting is try to win business to.
Understand.
And what is, like I said before, when we met, John, and I even told Gibson Group in front of you, I'm not looking to change insurance carriers or brokers if there's not a significant savings.
I understand.
And these folks have come back and said it's a savings, and I'm looking at this thinking, that would not be, it would be a disjustice for us not to look at what they are proposing on savings.
And my thought would be, they had, on the benefit side, I think they had three or four items of significant savings that they brought up in our meeting two months ago. On the property casualty side, they had none, because they said they would have to put that off to quote it in December of next year, because it was too late to quote that.
Okay.
And I would agree with them. So if we're talking about just the employee benefit side, that's fine. That's why I said, what is the scope of our discussion? I don't know what it is. You'll have to tell me.
The scope of our discussion is look for the best overall price that the city can have with insurance. I mean, to me, that's pretty simple.
What, it's not when you're talking about insurance coverages, because you've got to be able to quote apples to apples and underwriting, and providing all the underwriting information is paramount to getting the right price. And so who's to say that we're getting the exact comparison? Are you hiring a third-party expert to do that? Or you, I don't know how you're, again, scope is what I'm asking for.
Okay, I will just tell you, not saying that Todd's an expert, but I will tell you that I have been talking with Council President Austin and Todd, who's an insurance person, that has helped with this, just because he's on the council and he's an insurance person.
Okay.
And we've taken his input. So I guess I'm kind of confused, too. We're just trying to save the taxpayer dollars, and that's it.
Okay, I understand, and I think that's important. And so my thought is, let us compete. And my point is, at least from this standpoint, is I don't know what you want me to present. I'm asking you to let them go first, present, and then I can respond and say, you know what, I agree with what they're saying. Or I step back and say, no, I disagree.
Okay, if you want them to go first, I'm doing that.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest, because what I heard Mr. Ald say is, you've got my best. That's what he said. You've got my best there. So perhaps, and all these things are public record, then perhaps it would be, makes sense to have Gibson come forward and say why he doesn't think it is the best.
Absolutely.
And we'll just do it right here in public.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Well, first, I want to say thank you to the mayor's office, to city council, to youth council. Thank you for having us tonight. We're Gibson Insurance. I'm David Wheatley, property casualty. This is Anthony Gregory, employee benefits, and John Slusser, commercial insurance managing advisor. This is kind of an awkward format, right? This is kind of an awkward format. And for us to, in order for us to explain how we can save the city all this money, all the things that we can do for the city, all the programs that we can install, the ways we can create a better user experience overall, in order for us to do that, we have to highlight the current state that we found the insurance program in. That's just kind of the nature of this. We do not mean, I want to make it clear, no one on this team means to disparage anyone or any organization at all. We just want to present what we have observed as the current insurance program stands and then explain why we do things differently. When our team at Gibson engages with a new organization, when we get a chance to kind of look under the hood of an insurance program, we find varying degrees of opportunity. Sometimes there are not a lot of things you can do. Sometimes there are little tweaks that you can make to a program, little pain points. I'm confident that if we would have come to the city council, to the mayor, many months ago, and there were little tweaks that could be made, we would have been met with a, thanks a lot, guys, appreciate it, you know, move along. We'll see you at the next chamber event or something like that. But that is not what we found. When we came to the city and we looked under the hood of the insurance program on both sides of the house, we found major deficiencies. We found structural issues that we couldn't look away from. We found a city that was in desperate need for its insurance program to catch up. Now, why aren't we presenting a quote? Why aren't we talking about carriers and everything, kind of how the first conversation went? A couple of reasons. Number one, because you don't have a carrier problem. You don't have a carrier issue. The problem with the city is more fundamental. It is the method and the process by which you purchase insurance and mitigate risk. The second reason we're not talking about all these carriers and coverage and we're not quoting is because that's not Gibson's model. We aren't just going to come in and quote. I think anybody in insurance would agree that it is not beneficial for the client when you've got multiple brokers coming in there trying to solicit quotes from carriers. It damages the client. It, of course, blocks markets from being accessed. It prevents carriers from competing against each other to drive costs down. And then what it requires is for you, the council, to serve as the expert, just like John was saying, that you're going to be the ones that have to decipher all the nuances and coverage and rates and all that kind of stuff. I don't think you want to do that. So unless we're the broker on the account, Gibson, we're not going to quote. We're not going to come here and present a quote. It could be good for us. Like, I think that's a shrewd way to win business sometimes, to try to undercut and try to, because these carriers want your business, too. We could come in here and present a lower quote if we wanted to do that kind of short-sighted exercise, but we're not going to do that. If we were your broker, if Gibson was your broker for the city, and you did decide to move forward with us, though, here's what it would look like. Number one, clarity. If Gibson becomes your broker, you're going to have clarity and transparency, finally, in your program, and you will be in the driver's seat. When we first engaged with the city, I think the first question we asked was just, hey, tell us about your insurance program. Most basic question. The response we got back was, well, Franklin Insurance Agency is our broker. Okay, well, when we dug into the policies, we couldn't find Franklin Insurance Agency anywhere. It wasn't listed on any of the policies. If you'll please turn to page three in the document that we gave you, you'll see the way that your property casualty program currently stands. Franklin Insurance Agency doesn't actually represent the city at all. It has no power or authority here to contract with carriers. Franklin Insurance cannot advocate on claims. It can't manage or service your account. It has no authority to negotiate terms on the city's behalf. Franklin Insurance is actually owned by First Insurance Group out of Bloomington. First Insurance Group does have the ability to do some of these things that the city needs, but it does not have the adequate resources for a city the size of Franklin. So Franklin Insurance Group has to contract it out. That's when you bring in another company, Gregory and Appel. Gregory and Appel is your actual broker for this city. That wasn't in the conversation when we first came by here, nobody knew that. But Gregory and Appel is the name on all the contracts. Franklin Insurance Agency is the face. First Insurance Group is the holding company. Gregory and Appel is the one doing the actual work. Why? Why do we have this structure? I'm going to guess that, this is my guess, Franklin Insurance Agency was an awesome partner for this city for years. I bet it was a perfect partnership. I bet it worked really well. But we all live here, we've seen the incredible growth that's happened in our city. And in order to stay connected with this account, even after getting acquired by Franklin, or by First Insurance Group, they had to call in another broker to actually do the work. The problem with that, the problem with this structure that you're looking at, is it doesn't do any good for the city. There's a lot of gray area, things can get bogged down, it leaves room for fumbles, it creates confusion. The only parties who are benefited by this transactional line here are the ones that are getting paid by the city's taxpayer funds. And to our knowledge, we don't know any city the size of Franklin that has this kind of middleman, co-broker setup. And frankly, the city's property casualty spend is much too great. Your exposures are way too nuanced with all the departments to operate in a system like this. It just doesn't make sense for the city, for the residents, for the employees. If you turn the page, though, you will see our proposal that we're giving to you. It's not a series of transactions. It's one broker, one team that you can go to for everything. Instead of three solutions that don't quite fit and kind of need each other, how about just one? It's a streamlined, predictable, consistent, all-inclusive, a property casualty partnership between the city and Gibson. Another thing you could expect to see from us if we were your broker is proactivity. A repeated proactive process, a three-year plan, not just living from renewal to renewal, but a three-year repeatable proactive process. In insurance, proactivity is everything. It is everything. Every broker says they do it, few of them actually do. The way property casualty insurance works is basically on a first-in, first-out basis. That means that in order to save the most possible money for the city, to get the very best coverage, to help your client win, you need a broker that's going to be early to the market and create a comprehensive, top-of-stack submission. Underwriters know, they want it long before the policy expires. They want it extremely detailed. They want to be able to see when they look at this submission, has this broker been involved? Are they really hands-on? Are they doing everything they can to partner with their client to mitigate risk and put them in the best position to be an attractive risk transfer? And underwriters can tell between that kind of scenario and kind of the reactive autopilot mode. They can tell a difference. And it affects everything, their quotes and their conditions. Franklin's effective date, again, we're talking about proactivity. Franklin's effective date for property casualty lines is, as Mr. Ald said, December 17th. Do you know when that meeting was to have the proposal presented to the city? It was December 16th. It was 10, 11 hours before that policy expired. That's when the city was given, hey, here's a proposal. That doesn't sound very consultative to me. For reference, our client, Town of Whiteland, their effective date is January 23rd. Our first meeting with them is in September. And we meet with our internal municipality team beforehand, we meet with them after. It's a consultative, hey, Whiteland, what have you done in the areas of risk management? Here are some suggestions, here's some benchmarking, here's what we're seeing in the municipality space, here's how we can drive your premiums down. And it's, it gives them the opportunity, because we present our proposal a month ahead of time, to come to a setting like this, if Carmen, if Whiteland wants to do that, they can converse with the council, they can ask us to go back to the market and tweak some things. There's time, there's room to do that, because it's consultative. To present a quote, even if you're sticking with an incumbent carrier, to present a quote the afternoon before it expires at midnight, I can't, I've never seen that before. And a city should never operate like that. We're talking about an insurance spend, property and casualty, 600,000 to 700,000 of the taxpayers' dollars. And we're dealing with it at 2:00 PM, the day before it expires. What are you even going to do if you wanted to change anything? I don't, there's no time. The carriers are probably home by then. So that means all buildings, police, fire, liability, auto, cyber, everything except work comp was going to expire in a matter of like 10 hours, and here's the quote we're giving to you. That's just unacceptable for a city. If you turn the page, you can see our proactive timeline, the one that Gibson would run for the city, and it starts right away. If Gibson's your broker, we will immediately conduct our sightline assessment. We will level-set all your exposure and risk, and then we'll start getting to work 150 days ahead of your policy expiration. We collect every ounce of data from all your departments that will be appealing to carriers. We meet with you months ahead of time, giving you a detailed look at the market, benchmarking what other municipalities are doing. We update all your exposures, all your valuations. We devise a game plan. Together, together, we do this, proactive. If you partner with Gibson, you're going to get first-class tools and resources. That means risk management consultation. This city is excelling in many areas. One of them is safety. It's not in all municipalities. It's really part of the culture here at Franklin in our different departments. Safety is a strength for us. Well, when you work with a large national broker like Gibson, you get all the tools and resources that help with that. You get the. You get the, our RiskNav internal database that can be customized just for you with all the resources that your department heads can use, all the documents there. You also get a loss control professional whose sole job is to come into municipalities and help mitigate risk and drive premiums down. Ours is a longtime firefighter battalion chief who knows city safety like nobody else. You also get contract certainty. So Lynn probably gets contracts all the time from folks who, who want to be a vendor or contractor for the city. And she knows the law, but if she ever has questions about insurance and where indemnification stands and who's covered in a loss, she can send that to us. We turn it around in-house and within 24 hours so that you know that Franklin will be covered. If Gibson is your broker, you're going to have all these tools and resources. You're going to have a proactive process. It all delivers a consultative approach that brings your price down. One single broker, a partnership, let's help keep safety a strength here too. Another strength in this city that kind of deserves some recognition is our employee benefits. Mentioned it earlier, that the employees that work here enjoy rich employee benefits. We want to protect that. I'm going to turn it over to Anthony to talk about what, what some of the stuff he found in the benefit space.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate your time. Want to, want to quickly just go into a little bit. The mayor mentioned that the conversation that we'd had was brought to the city this year was, was mostly undue because of the increase of cost of being passed to employees. He wanted to do his due diligence before passing the cost along and ensure that there weren't other stones that could be unturned. Gibson tapped him on the shoulder, asked for the opportunity. We were given the opportunity. The mayor's unwillingness to accept the status quo and not leave any stone unturned engages us in our sightline process. In this process, it's done on a continual and annual basis. We were able to uncover a long list of opportunities and inefficiencies that the city was unaware of. I think I'm repeating what David's saying, so I'm going to go ahead and skip to some of these specifics. So just getting into the specifics of the program, there's currently no care navigation whatsoever. So we're allowing the spin to go all different avenues, every hospital setting, outpatient facilities, and there's no, there's no, there's no navigation being done. What this is doing is not sending employees to high, or high, high-quality, low-cost facilities, and they're missing out on a savings opportunity. That analysis, the way we handle that, we pull a prior 24 months of claims experience and we run them through our different vendors. When those vendors reprice it, they say historically, had Gibson, or had the city been with us for the last 12 to 24 months, this is the savings that would have came back. For, for the prior 12 months, had they been implementing care navigation strategies, that dollar amount is between 140 and $280,000 of direct savings that the city lost out on. We have several partners that are, that are available to do this, some within the city of Indianapolis, some there's travel tourism as well. The Johnson Memorial Health is one of those vendors as well, so we're not taking steerage from within the city and moving it out of the city. Excuse me. This is something that can retain within the city as well, which I know that partnership with JMH is very meaningful and impactful. And that's one of the reasons why the mayor and Dr. Dunkle brought PMR Healthcare in as an onsite, near-site clinic model. There's no ongoing monthly dashboards. There's no claims data being shown, there's no health trends, and we're not tracking large claims. We have no idea what's happening year to year, and then you're presented with a renewal and assuming, is this renewal fair? You have no idea. You, you haven't done any due diligence throughout the year to have a better understanding if that's true, if, if that renewal is legitimate, or if Anthem's throwing you a bone and they're saying, hey, we're going to give you a $2 PPM savings, which is what happened last year. Without the, without, the, the large claim piece, I have to speak on because there was an egregious situation. In the meeting in November that the mayor talked about with, with Franklin Insurance Agency was a part of, we talked about a $400,000 liability on the plan, a lasered individual, meaning that every claim dollar attributed to this one member, up to $400,000, the city pays for. No one on the council, no one in the room, except for Franklin Agency, knew about this individual. We were clueless. We were all shocked. I didn't even know about it. I hadn't seen it. There was nothing in the stop-loss contract at all. This was a conversation that had been had and was sent over prior to, prior to anyone else's knowledge. So once that happened, we dug into it. And you know what happened in the meeting in January? That member was never even on the plan through the renewal. That, that individual stayed on the renewal from '24 to '25, and there was no negotiation done saying, hey, they're off the plan, this liability shouldn't be there. That liability remains. It's not actually going to take, there, there, there's no issue there with, from, from a standpoint of like a dollar perspective this year because they're off the plan, but it inhibited your ability to negotiate the renewal. No conversation was had. Like, the very first thing I do as a broker is understand what's going on, look at the cost, look at the trends, and then I negotiate with the underwriting team of whatever, whatever point solution it is. If it's stop-loss, if it's PBM, if it's the network, I'm having conversations and saying, this isn't fair, this isn't right, here's why. And I'm refuting the facts that they're providing me and saying that we, Gibson, the resources that we have, we've provided the insight, the analytics behind that to say why this makes sense. The, the biggest thing on the Anthem contract, which I spent a number of years at Anthem, that stands out to me is when I look at the administrative costs for the city of Franklin, they're $80 and change. The average, the average cost for a new Anthem, a new Anthem client, or their administrative cost, if you're curious what that is, it's zero. Right now, you're paying for an administrative cost that should be wiped out because your pharmacy benefits manager, your PBM, is integrated through Anthem. They wipe that fee out because they say, hey, you know what? You have a PBM with us? We get so much money on the backend from pharmacy rebates, we're not going to charge you administrative cost. You are paying that. No one has called Anthem out on this. No one said a word. No one said, hey, by the way, we need to get this administrative fee waived because we have the PBM integrated. That didn't happen because there's no oversight. There's no understanding of how this works. It's just been egregious, one thing after another. The pharmacy piece. So we speak about that being integrated with Anthem. It's the, the PBM. There's been no analysis on that. And one simple analysis between two different vendors, we found $375,000 of savings for the city, that this has never been done. No one's seen this. We went to market, we went to the vendors, we asked questions. No one had done a specialty reprice. Pharmacy costs are not going down. They're continuing to trend up. So if we don't get ahead of this, it's just going to continue to be an issue. The things that we're seeing on the, on the employee benefit side, or also on the PNC side, it's just not as egregious. Because when David talks about a six to $700,000 spend, we're talking about three and a half million dollars here. And how long has this been persisting? The last thing, the, the biggest thing in my opinion, is that the current commission structure for the employee benefits is a misaligned incentive. The way it operates right now, if the city pays more in health insurance claims, Franklin Insurance Agency makes more money. They get paid more as it is. It's a percentage of premium. So if I'm unsuccessful, I get paid more. That's, that's, that's not, that's not right. That's not how it should be. So right now, it's on a percentage. We work on a flat fee basis. We don't allow for this type of stuff to happen. That's egregious. Maybe it wasn't intentional, but that's something that we would course correct immediately. All I can say is, I, I, I'm excitable. I love insurance. I think that there's a huge opportunity here. And there's no one that's going to advocate more for you than me and David. We're excited with the opportunity.
You have two minutes left, gentlemen.
I won't even, I won't even be two minutes. We were here a few weeks ago at a city council meeting, and all these firefighters were here. And the topic of the night was the short-term disability in the firefighters, and it was tense. That was a tense environment when you walked in here. The council took that very seriously. You, you all, the news was here, you all deliberated over it, you collected the data, you talked to the appropriate people, and you made the right decision. It was a very difficult decision, but it was actually the decision that had to be made the only way for the city. It was something that maybe made sense in the past, it wasn't serving you anymore. Commercial insurance is not that issue, okay? The, the public interest is not as much, but the benefits for the public trickle all the way down. And I'll never forget what Councilman Taylor said in that meeting after you all made that difficult but necessary decision. He said, look, quote, "It's not personal, we just have to do what's best for the city." That's, that's the same case here. This city has, has grown and scaled beautifully. The insurance program has not gone with it. Our proposal is to give this, give this city the, an insurance partnership that it deserves, one that, one that can help take you to that next level that you deserve to be as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. They use the time.
John? Since I started out with the, the property casualty, we'll do the same thing and try to correct some of the fact errors that they related. I don't know where they get their facts, but we'll go through it. Franklin Insurance Agency is owned by John Ald. John W. Alden Company, Inc. owns Franklin Insurance Agency lock, stock, and barrel. Franklin Insurance Agency did not sell to First Insurance Group at Bloomington. We are a member of First Insurance Group, and we are a member of their organization in order to access additional insurance markets. It has nothing to do with this insurance product. I have no idea where you get your facts. Number two, we negotiated a contract to work with Gregory Nappel, and we did it a number of years ago in order to access more markets and, and be able to access additional resources on behalf of the city. What we bring to the table as an insurance agency is a local representative, representative that your people in your departments, your citizens in the city of Franklin can work with one-on-one. We do that exceptionally well. Our staff is fantastic with the years of experience, and I would put our people up against any insurance agency, whether you are from, I don't know, Fort Wayne, South Bend, wherever Gibson's from, they're an international insurance agency, that's great. But they cannot deliver the services and the level of communications to your people here. If we can deliver the same level of services locally, I think, I, I, I don't see how you make another decision to take business away from a local community like that. We're very, very proactive in our, in our work. They continue to say that we have not, we don't communicate the timeline. And I want to go historically speaking. The insurance, the, the council, the mayor's office, had turned most of the insurance communications over to the clerk treasurer. So before Jan was there, it was Jane's office. And we dealt with them on a weekly, monthly, quarterly basis, whether that was on the renewals. They say we, we don't communicate. We do that all the time, constantly. We're communicating with department heads, we're communicating with their office. We started the renewal process, and we do it every year in September. We go through and, and talk with department heads and gather information. So to say that we do this at the last minute is just not true. As I said, we, we started working with Gregory Nappel, I don't, 87 years ago, I think?
On this program.
On this program. We've worked on, on other programs together. But still, Gregory Nappel is a leading insurance agency regionally, one of the leading insurance agencies doing municipal work in the state of Indiana. And Andy is a, Andy Brown's here with, from Gregory Nappel, and I want him to talk a little bit about the marketing aspects. And yes, now, we, we had that quote on the 13th of December, I believe, communicated with you guys to set up an appointment. The appointment couldn't be done until the, until the 16th. You're exactly right. But it does take some time to bring those things in at the end, and especially since we were going to be recommending changing, changing insurance carriers. So Andy, why don't you talk about that process for a second?
Yeah, so we, we have access to all the public entity markets, and there are some players that we have at our access. You know, everybody wants their own applications, especially from the law enforcement standpoint. The, the issue from the property and casualty standpoint is PNC for public entities, cities, counties, is becoming so constrained, so volatile. We've had five public entity carriers exit the market because right, wrong, or indifferent, they can't get on top of the law enforcement line of coverage. It's a very volatile line. City Franklin has performed well. We accessed four property and casualty carriers for your consideration, two to three cyber carriers for your consideration. So we were aggressive in the marketplace. And, you know, John and I talking, I moved to the state of Indiana in 96. I was serving you in this capacity back then. And so when we developed our own programs, started serving you again in this capacity, my company sold my division and went to work for Gregory Nappel in 2001. So, long story short is, I mean, we were aggressive in the marketplace. Is it a timeline that we didn't, we don't normally do? Yes. However, we felt like we brought the best public entity options to the table for you. And, you know, your percentage increase, if you go to conventions or conferences elsewhere, I'm sure your colleagues out there are not saying the same thing, that the type of program we brought to the table, the underwriting process that we went through, not with just selective, but the other markets, was very labor-intensive. But it's something that I do, it's something I do to support John Ald, and it's something I do to support the city of Franklin, because I know this is important.
Some of the other issues that were brought up that I, I think are a little misleading as far as service goes, from a risk management standpoint, we work directly with Brett. We do not bring that in, with Brett Jones, excuse me. We don't bring the mayor's office in, we don't bring Lynn in as, as city attorney or the, or the rest of the council. We've been working directly with Brett and providing those risk management programs for departments. And from safety standpoint, we have a wonderful safety person that comes in and has done training. Charlie Vatza has expertise in safety. Gregory Nappel brings other assets to the table. We work with, as I said, people on a daily basis. People come into our office. Last year, I can remember sitting across the table from a claimant, a, a, a citizen, the city of Franklin who was injured, fell. And we met with her five times, five times in my office. One of them, I was with her for an hour. I don't think that they're going to go meet up in Northside, Indianapolis, or Fort Wayne, or South Bend with them in order to address claims. So we bring a local service that you're not going to get elsewhere, without question. We, you talked about contracts, I think Lynn will agree. We work with Lynn constantly on looking at contracts. We worked and put together all the insurance information when you guys were developing contracts, everything from the amphitheater to the fair, to your festivals, to all the subcontractors. We review certificates of insurance proactively throughout the year. So we're doing all these things that they specifically said we don't do. So a little frustrated with all that. We've maintained continuous protection and never had a situation where there was a lack of coverage or an issue with coverage ever, through floods, through fires, through storms, auto accidents. We deal with auto accidents, a lot of auto accidents, Kirby, we've had a lot of auto accidents that aren't the, the fault of the city. And they, they go to us, and we end up calling other people, calling the people that had the accident, calling their insurance people, and coordinating those things on your behalf. We do that proactively internally. Whether it's police professional claims, thankfully, we've had a long time since we've had police professional claims. So that's good. We've had a few employment practice claims, water damage, the fire, the storm damage, and then the cyber liability claims that we had a couple of years ago. Who's the first person that Rick called when there was a cyber liability claim? At, I think, 10 o'clock Saturday night? You? Who was second? Me? I got the call at 11 o'clock, I think it was 11 o'clock Saturday night, to engage our insurance consultants to get that thing taken care of. And we're involved in those conversations for months and months and months, one-on-one, actively involved in that process, and successfully paid, I won't go into detail, successfully involved in, 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 in that claim being satisfied to, I believe, 100% to your satisfaction. So, again, I think we've done a tremendous job on behalf of the city for, for years. And all I, what, all I ask on the property casualty side, if somebody's wanting to compete, I think the mayor and the city council, I agree 100%, you're there to protect the city and the taxpayers. They just compete on an even playing field. Let them provide a proposal in detail that competes with what we are presenting. And I don't think that they've done that. So let's do that and have a bidding process in, in December. All of the things that they have presented and saying, we can do this, this, and this, and this, and we're going to save you X amount of dollars, it's all, there, there's no hard dollars there. It's, all they're doing is saying, we think we can save you this.[1713.21] On the property casualty side, I don't think there's any question about that. Flipping it over to the employee benefit side. And it's a little bit of a, a history lesson here to a certain degree. We moved you to self-insurance years ago, save you a million, six hundred thousand dollars at the time. It was a good move, saved you money. In my opinion, your claims have been below what you would see. I've got ten minutes left?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Below what you've seen, what most municipalities have seen. We talked about this, again, the comment was, we aren't proactive in getting involved. Our first meeting last year, when we started talking about this, was right after Jan came into office. We met with her again. Jan was given the responsibilities of handling the insurance benefits. We met with Jan in March and started talking about the structure and what we would recommend. We were suggesting at the time to look at restructuring employee benefits. I know Ken and I had talked about trying to get, get control of the costs associated and what they, and frankly, he was suggesting, I think other city council members have said this as well, we have a very, very rich benefit package, very, at a very, very low cost. And so my thought was, okay, what are we going to do? What are we going to do to try to address that? We talked about, number one, we could go out and get quotes from third-party administrators, quote out the, her, third-party minister right now is with Anthem, quote out the, the reinsurance, and quote out the life and disability. So we started that process in March, talking about it. The next meeting we have had was in July, in May. And in May, we talked about, okay, let's structure something up. And if we're going to do quotes, how are we going to structure this? So we designed the structure and tried to put together, I think Jan, put a five-year plan together?
Five-year plan, yes.
Tried to come up with a five-year plan as far as benefit changes and, and structural costs to, to the city, or to the employees. And said, okay, the next step is if we're going to go out and put this out to bid, we need to start right now. And we were told the, the city was not in favor at the time of, of putting it out to bid. So we did not.
What do you, excuse me, what do you mean?
In July.
City's not in favor of putting out the bid?
We, we talked, we were told, we don't want to do a bid to put it out for bid. And that was in July, in our July meeting, because we had initially presented that in July. So, and I, we talked with you and you would want, we weren't talking about that, but you had talked about what the costs were associated and how we were going to save money. And, and at the time, I believe you said, I'm in favor of taking a look at what that structural changes would be. And that's why we put that together.
That's correct. And then, and then John deducted time. That is correct.
Yeah.
However, the rest of the story is, what are we going to save on the other side, which is your side of the savings? I also ask about that. And we've never, what can you save with your other brokers or your, your insurance carriers? How can you save us money, just instead of us giving it back to our, our people to raise the premium?
That's what I said in, in putting it out, it would be to quote out the reinsurance and quote out. Now, their comment was, is that, you know, for instance, on the, one of the big things they brought up a couple of months ago, and, and I'd love for you to give me a legal opinion on this, and Lynn, maybe you should as well. They had talked about taking that one person and all, and looking at all the top high claims individuals that are city employees and encouraging them to get off the city's insurance and go to some company, someplace that you'd pay a fee to and get onto an ACA plan, I believe is what they had talked about. I personally don't think, it may be legal. I question whether it's legal. I looked up the law on that and it says you can't discriminate against employees. But I think their point was is that they would encourage the employee to make the decision to get off the plan in order to protect the assets of the plan. Okay, maybe not illegal, maybe questionably ethical. The other question I had, well, what happens when they want to get back on or things change? Does that affect public safety employees with the state law? I don't know, there's a lot of, lot of things in there that are questionable. And again, it comes with a, a, a competing company coming in and throwing enough stuff on the wall to try to think, oh, here's some more money we can save. Well, a little questionable, maybe a little questionable. On their, on their prescription drug program, I'm not going to argue with their dollars on the prescription drug program, because I just don't know. We had talked about quoting all those things out. I do know that Anthem had the discounts switched the way they did their discounts. And it was, they, they put the discounts back up against the, the prescription, the prescription drug costs on the renewal to take it out a little bit. I, I think it was supposed to be a wash. I do know that they, they had questioned the, the reinsurance cost. I'm not going to argue that. As I said, we did not bid out the reinsurance cost. We didn't proceed with that. The other question was the commissions. We get paid a ten percent commission on the reinsurance. They're exactly right. They may want to do a flat fee, that's fine. I don't, we get paid ten percent on, on the reinsurance costs. That's, that's the commission on the, on the insurance. The, keep in mind that your employee benefit program runs, as I said, they're right, about three point five million dollars in, in, in costs associated with claims. Those are claim costs. And the, the administrative costs to Anthem are a hundred thousand, a hundred and three thousand? There was no change, I don't think, in that. So, no question that those, you know, those, that's a fraction of the total three point five million dollars. And if they think that they can save three hundred thousand dollars, I, I, I think it's easy to say, you can save, you know, anything and, and go forward. I, I, I don't know that they can document a savings at this point. Maybe they can. I, I'm not, I'm not sure that they can, but you can make all the accusations you want up there. As far as, and then the group insurance, we meet with, with employees constantly in our office, typically meet with people at enrollment, going over enrollment changes. We meet with them, going over claim situations and try to help them with claims. I can't tell you the number of people that we go through. And again, they're coming to our office, in our office, to discuss those. I don't know who they would utilize to have on the property casualty side to address your local claims. I don't think they have an office in Franklin, maybe they do now. But we have an office in Franklin and we sit across the table from your employees and the citizens of Franklin to help them and try to take care of, take care of the city, so.
I'd just like to also dispel anything that the city of Franklin doesn't pay a dime more for our broker services on the PNC. We split commissions. Frankly, Franklin Insurance gets more of the commission, which is fine. We have these relationships all throughout the state, large cities, large counties. And we bring a level of expertise, experience, market access to our broker partners throughout the state. So what we do here in Franklin is not unique in any stretch. We don't charge any more, we go with standard commissions. If the city would be interested in fee for service, naturally, we could talk about that as well. But we split standard commissions with Franklin Insurance Agency.
Both of you saved one minute.
Perfect.
They both, exactly, exactly the same.
Again, how we got started here was, I was being told that we, the only way to save the money would be go back and, and raise our employee contributions. And I wasn't willing to do that until we looked at where could we get a savings. I also, I think I heard you guys say there was a savings of three hundred at one time. And you're, you didn't hit on this real loud. So I want to know, what is the savings? And, and I just addressed this question. We don't want to get up there, we've already presented, they presented. I just want to know again, what is the savings that you're telling us that we can see? I, I heard it, I think, I heard it in two different things. I want to know what that is, that number. That's, that's why we're here. And I will say that Franklin Insurance has been great for the city of Franklin. We all know each other. There's no, there, there's no issues with the family of John Ald. We love him to death, they're great citizens. But whenever we get down to the facts, I'm hearing you tell us while you're here, we can save you five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's what I'm hearing. Is that the facts or is that not the facts?
We have a quantitative savings analysis of over six hundred thousand dollars in employee benefits, flat out, at the, at the minimum. There are different levers that can be pulled, and we can go even beyond that, depending on the bracingness of the program. But this would be conservative, no employee, there would be no lack of employee operation, or we're essentially not going to discriminate benefits. It would be just overall savings of over half going, six hundred thousand dollars. One thing I do want to say, the commission for the employee benefits is not ten percent. It's also fifteen percent.
Okay, but I don't want to address that. We've already, like I said, we've already done that, so don't sneak those in on me. Is there any questions from the council here?
I just, what did, you said you could, you know, you can guarantee pulling different levers and being abrasive in different things. You know, how can you save us that money? Where, what, can you give me an example of two or three things where these are big ticket items that, you know, we can save you money right now?
The biggest single sum of savings is for the, through the pharmacy benefits relationship. So right now, you're going through an owned entity with Anthem Carelon is the pharmacy benefits manager that's owned by Anthem. And they're, they're not doing any type of sourcing. So they're, they're providing the formularies, the medication, and then they're receiving all the rebates on the backend. So if someone gets a prescription that's a high-cost dollar, there's a rebate that's associated with those specialty medications that goes back to the PBM. It's not being passed along to the actual employer. We would carve out that PBM and go to an independent PBM. And it would be like a TrueRx or TrueScript, which are both Indiana-based companies. And then they would pass those rebates back to the, back to the city. And the city would get real dollars checks quarterly from their base offer prescriptions that are being spent.
If, if I might just add, I don't know, Madam Clerk Treasurer, if you're able to pick up the recording too, but I know we have YouTube also. And so if anybody's answering questions, would you please go to the mic so we can make sure that those persons?
I'll stick to the mic to pick up.
Yeah, so if you, if you would please, if anybody gets asked a question, go to the mic so that those persons who are watching online can hear the answers to those questions as well.
Say, I would like to throw it back out to you guys as well. What, what, and with, what is something that you guys, within your scope, do you think that you could help and bring down the, bring down the costs as well?
Please, yes, thank you.
So, from the property casualty standpoint, we brought a carrier to the table, Selective. Again, reiterate the fact that your renewal this year, a lot of us do to you guys, good, hard work, your risk management, your police department. You earned a renewal that is well above market conditions. Standing level here in the state of Indiana, ten to fifteen percent is the norm from a renewal standpoint. So we did that this year by marketing your account to four different carriers. We're bringing Selective to the table. And I dare say, there's nobody that would be able to beat Selective's pricing this year for you. Second to that, if, I mean, the only way they can do this is AOR, our work with the city.
Explain what that means. It's called an agent of record.
Yeah. Yeah, so you'd be taking our work and handing it to them. And, you know, that's not the best way to do things. I, I concur with John, if they want to compete on the PNC, they should do that. And, but the time to do that is twelve seventeen, for the twelve seventeen twenty-five effective date. That seems the right thing to do. We got you a good program in place. It's the market leader. It took a lot of effort to get Selective to do it. If you were to try to change this, Selective would not honor an AOR without, they would want to be compensated on it. So they would have to do a council rewrite, which means at, at some point, they would get, they are, turn it into Selective. For them to be compensated, they'd have to cancel our policy, rewrite it with Selective. That means more applications, they got to do it, and it's going to change the, the city's effective date, so.
Could it also change the policy after that, this time? Could that policy not be available at this time?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't speculate on that, Counselor, that, that, I mean, I mean, this is a little bit uncharted territory. I mean, I, I can't, I, I can't commit to that, because at that time, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be our risk.
Yeah, a rewrite could cause it to be more premium or could be less premium as well.
It could go either way.
It could.
Yes, okay.
In this market, I doubt it. But it's going to be.
Just to be fair, yeah.
But, and I think they've already agreed that the market is very, very slim, very, very difficult, very volatile in the property casualty side. So it, it would be limited. On the, on the, on the health insurance side, again, I, I, I'm not going to argue on the, on their prescription drug program. I, I don't have the details on how Anthem had designed their prescription drug program and the, and the credits. I know that they were transferred this year. We'd have to look at it. I guess my thought would be, ask Anthem to come in and show you how their, how their prescription drug program is, is put together. I, I wasn't sure what you were looking at when we talked about this. We could have Anthem look at it. But they're saying that they're going to go to Anthem anyway, but probably move the prescription drug program someplace else to a third party. Okay, I don't have the access to that, and I said that before in, in the last meeting. And so, to a certain degree, I'm not really arguing with a lot of the stuff that they presented on the, on the, on the health insurance side. You know, I could go to a, you know, Gregory Appel has an employee benefits program that probably is exactly like what they would be doing. And I would probably partner with them. I know that their people have reached out, like, to Katie, to partner with her and doing the employee benefit side. So they do the same thing with other agents, I think, at the same time. But on the, on the health insurance side, I guess I would say, if, if they're able to put, put those things together, in my opinion, I think it is still questionable. I don't think there's anything rock solid saying they're going to save six hundred thousand dollars of insurance or six hundred thousand dollars in cost to you. It is speculative at best, because they really don't know yet. And I think they've agreed to that.
If I, if I might just focus this again, okay?
Yep.
Because a lot of discussion was had about putting out the bid and things like that. And I think we're used to talking about public bidding requirements. That's not what we're talking about here at all, all right? Typically, this decision is who will be our professional service provider? It's a professional services agreement, that's how it works. Typically, that is an executive decision, part of the executive branch. Because of the relationship that has been so long with Franklin Insurance Agent, in speaking with the mayor, he thought that he wanted to have a conversation, including the council, while not required, probably appropriate because of that longstanding relationship. And rather than just changing a service provider in the middle of the stream, as messy as this may all feel, he wanted to do it in public as to these considerations that are being done. So with that, I didn't want anyone to get confused about the requirement that we would have to bid individual PNC policies, individual employee, that is not what we are required to do. We retain a service, much like we retain professional engineering services, professional legal services, for them to do that kind of work. So I, I just wanted to make sure it was clear. I know it is to all of you who's shaking your head, but making sure it's clear to those members of the audience and those people who are watching online as to when they talk about bidding, we have not, not done something we're required to do.
We're just talking about broker of record.
That is, that, that is, that is correct.
That's the only thing that we're looking at changing. There's nothing else we're looking at changing, we're just talking A and B, broker of record.
Thank you very much, sir, absolutely.
My thought is just.
That is correct.
Who's going to service it better? Property casualty is a different discussion, I think, than the employee benefit side, but who's going to service your employees and your constituents, your, your citizens of Franklin, better when it comes to the property casualty side and the employee benefit side? My point is, is that I think it's somebody who has an office down the street, not somebody who's got an office on North Side Indianapolis or going to handle it out of Fort Wayne. I don't know where you guys would handle, who's going to handle the communication?
We're, we're not going to get in this kind of conversation at this point in time. It's for the council and for the mayor to make these decisions.
Is that something that, as a broker of record, can be split between the two? Is that?
I can't answer that question for you.
And I'm just, I'm just asking a question, is that something that is even worthwhile diving into, even looking at?
And, and I don't know that.
I don't know.
I don't know that ultimately the person who makes the decision would be entertaining that question.
There are two separate coverage disciplines. The employee benefits, I'm not an employee benefits person, I'm a property and casualty person. So there's two separate disciplines. And I contend that we got the city of Franklin the best terms this year. And you got a bird in the hand. So, you know, running the risk of a council rewrite, I, I just don't think it's the best.
With all due respect, let's focus the discussion at this point up here, rather than this back and forth with the individual provider.
I did want to ask though, I know that they stated that they could save us money if we were to go with them. Would you guys be able to do the same when it came, I mean, could you match their savings any? With what they're saying that they could save the city?
Employee benefits, they didn't.
Well, they're saying they're overall in their prescription benefits and stuff. Would you be able to save the employees and Franklin money just as well, or no?
I would go back and say what I said before. And that is, is that internally, as Franklin Insurance Agency, no, I don't have the ability to do that. I agree with them. They have, if they have the employee benefit program internally, I don't have it. I'd have to. it. I'd have to partner with somebody else. So, I'd need to have to partner with Gregory and Appel in their employee benefits program, or I'd have to partner with another third-party administrator with theirs and provide the local service here. And I think that that's what we do best. Now, the property, again, one of the problems with this discussion, we're talking about two totally different programs.
Right, but John, let's, let's be very focused in responding to the questions that the council members have asked.
So, yes.
That presentations have been done, but I will let the council members ask the question. We are done with this conversation.
Okay.
Okay?
May I respond to that question on behalf of Gibson?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm John. As he had just mentioned, this is about, we, we came in here to talk about capabilities, which then leads to savings. As he just mentioned, the structural fundamental operation of FIA does not change, whether that is employee benefits or property and casualty. What you're going to get from us is one holistic brokerage operation, and that is, we're going to represent employee benefits and we're going to represent property and casualty. And we look at those savings and capabilities as one combined package for you guys and some significant savings. Where we can get to the savings on the property and casualty side is because it was fundamentally structured wrong. He's correct. He does own FIA, but FIA does not hold any contracts. Contracts are held by FIG, First Insurance Group. That's, that puts them in a position where those contracts aren't appropriate for y'all, so then they work with Gregory and Appel. Thus, Gregory and Appel is providing you guys with the quotes in the 11th hour.
I think that's, I think that's answered the question. That's beyond the scope.
Sorry, my point behind that is...
Well, you're not sorry. I think we're, to be on the scope of what the question was specifically.
And I'm, I'm getting to this, how that affects savings. So, because of the structural fundamental aside of the way that their operation works, that puts us in a position where we have, where y'all have no power over your savings as it comes to, as it pertains to property and casualty. You can't put yourself in a position to negotiate terms rates because the broker of record on the policy is Gregory and Appel. Where we can create some savings is working with the carrier directly. We have the carrier contracts directly. We control the cost and the spend to y'all directly. That puts us in a position where we can create the greatest amount of savings as it pertains to the coverage that you guys need. So, in complete clarity, the way we operate is very holistic. We would represent both sides of your program, and there would be holistic savings made to the city of Franklin.
Thank you.
So, I have one question while somebody's there. So, I keep hearing about the hometown, and I appreciate we have a hometown person to, to go to and see in the streets. Can you guys address that?
Yeah. I moved to Franklin in 2017. I, I live in Trafalgar. My family goes to church here. We shop here. We go, we go to the grocery here. My wife works at JMH. I'm in the Franklin Chamber. I, I don't know if I could be more local. Thanks.
I do a good job of repeating what he said. So, I moved here in 2017. I now live in Bartersville. My church is here. My country club is here. My friends, my community, it's here. And to be candid, we do have an office in Carmel. I don't office out of Carmel. I'm remote. I am on the road. I'm in, I'm with my clients. So, I will be in Johnson County consistently, day in and day out, and I don't believe that there was a presence necessary from local on, within the open enrollment process. I will be here for office hours for whatever the timeframe needs to be. I'm on site.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. He's not even licensed.
Hold on, hold on. We're, we're done. There's no question before you, John. There's no question before you.
May I?
Yes, sir, please.
I've been quiet. I'll try to be brief. So, just give the crowd a little bit of background about myself because my name's been mentioned. So, I am licensed, fully licensed, and a financial advisor. I'm licensed to sell property and casualty and life insurance for 40 years now. John's a fraternity brother, a little older than I, John, and, and he offered me a job years and years ago. So, I have relationships with both parties here. But, I have questions and concerns. I don't write a lot of commercial insurance, guys, okay? So, it's mainly all the other stuff. I've never seen a renewal the day before. I went back and looked at the paperwork that you provided, and the date of that from Gregory and Appel was three days prior to that. Again, I've never seen one that late, and I know the market is tough, but 30 to, 30-day minimum, 60-day is more likely what the renewal started, okay? So, that, that is a red flag for me in some cases. It's not, it'd be end-all for me. And again, I never saw the property and casualty until you guys showed up and showed it to me that day. So, it wasn't like I was involved with it beforehand because I really, most of the stuff I can look at and I can tell you what it means, but I, I can't talk your talk in the property and casualty side on a lower level, but not on the, on that level. But the, the renewal receiving late is, is, is a, is a negative for me, okay? And you know that. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know now that should have been delivered a long time ago. Even if we wanted to shop someplace else, we couldn't have shopped for that, right? Because we just, we didn't have the time, okay? Now, you mentioned a three to five, I think, was that three or five-year, John? Just three or five-year? You met with Jan and had a three to five-year?
It's a five-year plan.
Yeah, and I just, I, I'm going to step in here for a second because obviously I didn't take office until last January, and this all got put on me. No council, nobody in the mayor's office, nobody else stepped in to help me. This was on me. I didn't know what I was doing. John and his crew explained everything to me. So, if I didn't project that, or if I didn't get that to everybody in a timely manner, then I apologize. But that is no way everybody's fault.
We're not, I'm not pointing a finger at you, Jan.
Okay, but I want you to understand.
I, I do understand.
I was new in January, so...
Oh, so am I. This is my first chair on council. So, if you have a five-year plan, and you know we've been talking about this, why didn't we see the five-year plan?
Okay, let me answer that. I stopped the five-year plan. The five-year plan was to go back and charge our employees, and that's what I said.
Oh, well, I, okay, that's...
That's the five-year plan. That was all it was. There was no savings on their side for anything.
Okay.
Except we're going to charge our employees this much this year.
Well, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do that, but...
This much the next year. And I didn't want to do that until we got to see both sides.
The fact remains, there's a five-year plan. We didn't see it because, you know, the mayor said no because we're not going to do that. But there was neither, no other option. There was not another five-year plan put forth. So, that's a problem for me as an agent and also as a council member and a citizen of Franklin. You know, this is a big group, and it demands a lot of time, and it demands a lot of staff. You know what I mean? I mean, it just does. I couldn't handle this case in my office. We just couldn't. So, you have to be okay with saying that. You have to say, I can or cannot. John has said he can't handle the employee benefit program. He said that in the meeting, and he said that tonight as well, okay? The AOR can be done with the employee benefit plan. My question is, on the commercial side, because we don't want to do a rewrite. I, I would not recommend a rewrite for these guys, and they're going to lean on me just because of my background. Can an AOR be done on the individual policies, workman's comp, commercial liability? How many policies do you guys have in place here?
I have to do them all individually.
Yes, so the one who would require a rewrite, we wouldn't have to do an AOR on it right now.
So, how do you...
So, you said you had a...
Excuse me, we wouldn't, we would not rewrite the policy. They've already done the work.
I understand.
The policy was staying in place and we didn't pay.
There were some, there was some coverage that said would have to be rewritten because of who it's with.
Your selective insurance policies, to accept a AOR, BOR, broker of record, for them to get compensated, they would have to do a council rewrite.
Yes, so what does Selective have?
Your, the lion's share.
Okay.
Lion's share of your liability, your general liability, your public officials, your employment practices liability, your umbrella, your properties with, your work comps with IPAP, so...
So, it's not all there at Selective, John?
No.
No, okay, all right.
There's a number of different policies.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
Changing that, changing that policy right now wouldn't save us any money. Wouldn't save us a dime. Basically, the commission would just switch from you guys to you guys at that point in time, correct?
But they would, if they want to do a council rewrite, if they had to get compensated right now, then they would have to do a council rewrite, complete new applications, and change your effective date, unless they don't want to get compensated.
Yeah, I, yes, I'm familiar with that.
And they're, they're shaking their head that they don't want to get compensated. So, there's no rewrite would be required. You just changed it.
We would not rewrite the policy. We would not rewrite the policy. We let the policy stand as is. This is a capabilities presentation for what we're able to do for y'all.
Yeah.
We would keep that policy in place. They've already done the work. They're right. They've already done the work. Now, are there some coverage areas that we would want to clean up? That's absolutely true. But they've done the work. They would retain the commissions for the rest of the policy year. We would manage it immediately through that policy year, and as we get into, into the renewal period, which we start that in, in August to September, that's when we would look at other markets. We've already talked to other markets. We represent other markets that these guys don't. We would maintain the policy. They would continue to collect the pay. We would work for free, in theory, for the rest of the policy year. It would not change anything for y'all. It'd be no headache at all.
So, this is not something that has to be changed right now. I just, my, my thoughts is, the policies do not... To again, answer the question, and we're doing this in public because Steve, the mayor, wanted to have this public conversation. Ultimately, he makes the decision as to who will be our professional service provider. But he did not wish to do that without having this conversation. So, he could determine that the professional service provider is this person or this person. What that person advises us is then what would be followed, and I think I'm hearing from the two professionals in the room, that a rewrite would not make sense at all.
On the property and casualty?
On the PNCs. Use of the word PNCs means property and casual. That's right. That's correct. So, I would, I would surmise that regardless of what decision gets made, we would keep the same policies in place, and it won't be too long from now that we'll be talking about renewal times and shopping those.
Todd, I know, Todd, I know you did some follow-up research with some other municipalities. Do you want to report on that?
Sure. You know, I like to do my due diligence, and so I was provided with referrals from Gibson. So, while I was on vacation on the beach, I made calls, and that's a lot easier to do while you're on the beach. So, I called, we were given, I think, 10 referrals that Gibson currently has, the employee benefits, just, I'm going to speak on the employee benefits right now. Most of these have both, but the town of Whiteland, city of New Haven, Indiana, city of Plymouth, Columbia City, Indiana, city of Mr. Walker, and I don't want that to startle everybody that says, okay, they're only in northern Indiana because that's, that's not the case. Those are the ones I called. They're here also. All of them were, all of them were positive responses, as you can imagine. There were no negatives. I always ask, what's a negative? There are no negatives, okay? And I'm only sharing this with you not to sway your opinion in any way, just to let you know that I did do the due diligence that I thought was required of the existing clientele. I don't even have to call John's clients because I know who his clients are, so I know what background he brings. But I believe it's a, you know, we're doing what we need to do. This can has been kicked down the road, from what I understand, for a long time. I wish you guys would have done it before I got on council, but here we are today, and I'm sitting up here, so. And I'm happy to help out in answering any other questions that any of you have, so.
I, I don't have any questions, Josh, or anything. I don't have any questions. I think they've all been answered.
Okay. So, where does that put us now?
I believe, sir, that the question that you ask of the council was you were looking for a recommendation as to how to move forward with our professional services advisor in this regard. That's what you tasked us to do in this meeting. Do you wanted, I believe, to get a recommendation from the council?
Correct, and that, that is what I'm, I'm looking for. Okay, why, why did I just not pull the plug and say this is what we're going to do after I heard the $500,000 to $800,000? Because I know we have dear friends sitting over here on this side that we value the friendship and we value what has been brought to the city of Franklin. However, I think we have gotten to a place that we may have outgrown some of this, and I, and I've always stated, like at our city, stay the city address. I want to be partners. I want to collaborate. I don't want to pound my chest and say, look what I did. I saved the city $500,000. I want us all to be in it together. So, I guess my question is, somebody needs to make a motion for a recommendation. Either yes, we're going to go this way with all of it, or we make a recommendation that we stay where we're at. So, I guess that's what I'm asking the council. Where are we at? We got a, we got a state house that's talking about cutting property taxes that's going to devastate communities, and we're going to have to start looking for savings somewhere. So, where are we at?
Do you have an opinion?
I would make a motion to approve Gibson as our new provider.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Jan, would you do a roll call vote?
Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Shuck?
Yes.
Ms. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
I was going to, I was going to make a request to table it, just I think that there's more information that was brought today than what I knew before today's meeting, so I don't know how that, how you want me to...
Okay, so we have a motion, and if you want to vote no, that's up to you, because we, we do have a motion to vote on, so.
Correct.
At, at this time.
So, I have to yes or no?
Yes, yes.
I say no until we, we can get, gather more information.
Mr. Prime?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm with Ms. Price, and I, I think there's too much that's been brought to light that we can actually approve it, so I say no.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you correct me if I'm wrong, but the resolution was to recommend remove, moving forward with Gibson, and I believe the vote was four to two?
It was four to two.
In favor, is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
And I will say that I'm going to go ahead with that recommendation as I ask, what would that be? And it's four to two, and that's where we're at because I agree with the recommendation. So, thank you for coming tonight and hearing it out. Yes, sir.
Why is it...
Sure. Go up there. No, go up there, state your name.
It's the only way we can record.
I'm new around here. My name's Lester Zimmer. I live at 52A Street here in town. And I, why don't the votes add up to all y'all?
There, I can answer that, sir. We are a council of seven.
Oh, okay.
And one of our councilwomen tonight is home as a result of the stomach flu she got from that young lady at the end, who is her daughter.
Can you bring that up?
That, no, that's fine. But as a result of being a council of seven, we only need four members to have a quorum, and then once you have a quorum, we just need a majority vote, sir.
Okay, that helps a lot.
You bet.
Thank you. Okay, that's where we're at. We'll go on to council comments, and Ella, I'm going to start with the mayor's youth council, and if you would introduce again and give us any updates.
Okay, well, I'm Ella McGuinness. There's a lot of you. Do you guys just want to go introduce yourselves?
Go ahead. Don't be shy.
I'm Kelly Cadwell.
I'm Anna Bromley.
I'm Taylor McKinnon.
I'm Patty Jeffrey.
I'm Lucy Willem.
I'm Taylor Truitt.
I'm Ken Borland.
I'm Adela Wood.
So, due to our meeting last week getting canceled because of scheduling conflicts, I don't know the latest update on the pickleball lights, but I do know that I think we're waiting for warmer weather to go install the light poles, I think. That's what I got from the last couple texts, but...
No, that's exactly what it is. Good job.
Thank you, thank you. And then, I think we're just refocusing on like a smaller project to just kind of like, maybe like a community gathering type thing to just, so we're not just sitting there at meetings doing nothing. And then, we are looking forward to elections coming up, so we will be electing a new executive board, so that's exciting. So, we're just looking forward to the end of the year.
Thank you for the update. Jennifer?
Nothing, thank you.
Irene?
No, nothing for me.
Todd? You know I have something. Family and I went to celebrate Denise's birthday last night at IOZOS for the first time, and it was outstanding. They were packed, and I tried to get them to delay their opening until I got back from vacation, but that was a hard no. And I tried to get them to delay their opening until I got back from vacation, but that was a hard no. But we were there last night in the food and the service was awesome.
Sean?
I just wanted to say that, you know, to the Gibson group, as you know, that I put a lot of thought into what I vote for. And I wasn't ready to vote you guys in yet. Not that I don't think you're good guys, not that I don't think you'll do a good job. But I also think that we, we're a little premature to pull the plug right now. So, but I appreciate all the hard work you guys are going to do. And I hope you do save us a lot of money.
Thank you, Sean. Ken?
Just for the record, so everybody knows, I personally do business with Mr. Alden, his firm. My insurance agent's sitting right there, Mr. Brown, and does an amazing job for me. And so just so everybody knows, it's not personal. This is not personal whatsoever. This was a purely business decision to save the city money and to take care of the constituents that put me here. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Tara, do you have anything? Jan?
Uh, nothing, thank you.